Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Madison Public Schools Board of Education to order at 7:30. And could we please rise for this? Thank you. Well, I'm celebrating tonight, but first I think we'll start with the school community session where we call for public participation.
Welcome everyone in person and joining us online. We do welcome public comment at our board meetings. We ask that you state your name and your address. Comments are limited to three minutes. A meeting such as tonight's is not a time for discussion, so it shouldn't be expected that the board or administration will respond. If necessary, you'll be contacted for a follow-up. If you're joining us in person, please raise your hand, and if you're joining us online, please raise your hand and hope we can follow up. So we'll start with anyone in person who'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Beth Azabeta. I'm a Madison resident, 81, Silo Hill. My family and I moved here recently in 2022. The number one reason being the excellent school district. We have a Ryerson and Brown student, both of which are thriving and loving their schools and teachers. Thank you to everyone on the board and folks here and not here tonight that contribute hard work and tireless efforts in our schools. My family is deeply grateful. I'm a committee outreach leader for the recently formed Parent-led Madison Youth Unplugged Community Group. It started with a small book club to discuss this book, The Anxious Generation, then formed into a small Facebook group that has now grown to over 400 Madison community members and counting. As you heard from us back at the August meeting, we are collectively acting together to educate, discuss, and share, and bring solutions to our community to help and support our kids in this challenging digital age. We are all thrilled that Madison schools continue to succeed and show outstanding test results and rankings within the state. However, do any of these tests determine the state of our kids' mental health, self-esteem, social anxiety, levels of depression? As you're all aware, there is a growing movement surrounding the issue of phones in schools and the mental health of our kids. The recent research is clear about the negative effects of phones in the school environment, effects that impact directly on learning, attention spans, as well as missed instruction time for teachers. Here are some recent stats. Seventy-two percent of high school teachers report cell phones are a major distraction in the classroom, taking collective days out of each school year's instruction time. Ninety-five percent of teachers say anxiety and depression is a problem in public K through 12 schools. Ninety-seven percent of students use their phones during school hours for an average of 43 minutes per day, which is the length of a full class in many schools. Recently, at one of our Madison Youth Unplugged meetings, a parent told the shocking story about their child's experience one day in the Daniel Hand High School lunchroom at the end of last year. Her son said he was eating his lunch and realized the whole cafeteria was quiet. No sounds except for kids eating. He looked around and saw that all the students were on their phones. He suggested to a few of his friends at the table that they put their phones down and talk, and one of the friends responded with a laugh, "Why would we do that?" Phones inhibit face-to-face communication. Research suggests face-to-face social interactions are linked to better mental health, promoting deeper engagement and stronger connections. While we appreciate more restrictive rules, we are also hearing from many parents in our group that they are still getting texts from their kids throughout the school day. We are calling on the school board to do even more. Take action for a district-wide and consistent smartphone-free policy in our schools and our classrooms. We are urging you to add in the upcoming budget and investment into Yonder Pouches or something similar, which has shown proven results in many other school districts. Madison Youth Unplugged is here and is eager to collaborate with you on this initiative. This is our moment. Let's do the right thing for Madison Youth. Thank you so much.
My name is Jim McDonald. I live at 17 Todd Mill Circle. I have a daughter in kindergarten at Jeffrey, and my other daughter will start there next year. I would like to expand on Beth's comments as well as offer a story. Some statistics for you. Forty-one percent of teens with the highest social media usage rate rate their overall mental health as poor or very poor. Twenty-two percent of high school students have seriously considered suicide in the last year. Ten percent have attempted suicide in the past year. Rates of school loneliness have doubled since 2012. More than 50% of kids get 237 notifications per day, while some receive as many as 4,500 every day. And about 23% of these occur during school hours. In researching the topic, we came across this great case study from Forest Hills Public Schools in Michigan, an enormous public school district with 10,000 students. They completely removed and banned phones prior to the 2020-2021 school year. They found when they removed the phones, student interactions increased significantly, and kids seemed to be much less anxious and happier without their phones and all the notifications. Here's a quote from a seventh-grade girl from that school district, which in my opinion says it all. "In seventh grade, I used to spend over an hour getting ready in the morning. I had to make sure I looked perfect. All of my friends had phones, and I just never knew when one of them was going to whip out their phone in class, in the hallway or in the bathroom to take a picture. Because of this, I felt the constant daily pressure to look a certain way so that I felt pretty in the pictures. No blemishes. I wanted to look perfect. Now, without phones being used by everyone, the pressure's off. There's nothing to worry about. I can be more natural. I can finally be me. I believe it is our responsibility as parents to monitor and manage phones in the homes, and the responsibility of the district and our schools to create a more focused learning environment by removing noneducational portable electronic devices from all classrooms. As we presented in August's board meeting, there are solutions out there our district can invest in such as Yonder Pouches. We urge you to take action now. Put this on your agenda every board meeting. Put Yonder Pouches in your budget for 2024-2025 so we can impact and be leaders on this issue in Connecticut and in the country. This is our moment. Let's do the right thing for our Madison youth." Thank you. I have some materials to leave. You folks, put it right here.
If there's anyone online who would like to speak, I'll go back and forth. If you just raise your hand if you're online and you begin, you need to join the call. Okay, so we move a hand. All right, Amy Thomas.
Hi, thank you. My name is Amy Thomas. I live at 34 River Edge Farms Road. I have a daughter at Brown Intermediate School. You know, I think it goes without saying, living in Madison, we're very happy with and proud of the school system. But, you know, 2024, we can't ignore the issue of smartphones and the risks, the actual risks they pose to our youth. So just kind of spontaneously building on what Beth and Jim said, you know, I think now that we know the effects, the negative effects of smartphones, you know, we know the Surgeon General has warned the nation about their effects, liken them to tobacco. You know, I just want to urge our leaders and our board to take the important step of restricting cell phones, not restricting use, but having phone-free schools. As Jim said, it's a great opportunity for Madison to be a leader and more important, to do the right thing. And I think, you know, the hardest part aside from potential addiction for the kids is that all the other kids are doing it. So if we just eliminate that, that's just a huge win for their mental health, for the social interaction, and ultimately, of course, for the education. So thank you for considering it and, you know, recognizing this issue as important as it is.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online while we're here who would like to speak at this time? Just raise your hand if so. It's an awesome person that'd like to speak. All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Well, for our next item, I'll turn it to Dr. Russell for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Gail Kelly. One of the great things we get to do in September each year now that the legislators give us this flexibility is to start right off talking about the graduation date. And then Mr. Salatary shares this with staff and families. I know they've been very appreciative over the last few years. So being able to make plans, being able to tell out-of-town visitors when they need to come in, and really plan for that special occasion, which we know is a huge event for us here in Madison. So we're good with Mr. Salatary. We've identified it's June 12, 2025. That's the graduation date for the class of 2025. So great events coming forward. And after sharing this with the board and the public here, Mr. Salatary, share this, upcoming notifications, that can start planning for that and night at hand and everything else that goes along with that. It is two days after our last day of school. So it will give us two snow days and then some. What we really, our challenge oftentimes is to make sure we're, you know, at a date where we're at least an exam, you know, so we're not using assembly hall and other things during the school. Also, as long as we're past that, it gives us some flexibility to move the time if we needed to. You know, two years ago, we moved the time a little earlier. Our rain date, though, will be stated as June 13th. Hopefully, I'll have to fix that.
Thank you. I think the change that you put through two years ago worked really well.
Yes, you know, it's been a bit longer since. Thank you, both of you, Mr. Salatary and staff. And now, as we move on to our presentation, we're excited to bring us together for the board tonight and share it with the public as well. You know, I was at a back-to-school event that the Commissioner of Education was sharing some stats in Connecticut. So for our small state, there's actually, they consider 201 districts, school districts in Connecticut, probably too many, you know, for our small little state, but there's 201. And so I thought of that 200 other districts would love to share, change, you know, results with us. As they present the results, they're not hitting the numbers that we are here, you know, that last year they had number one. And so when you think and you see these results tonight, and when you think about that, if you see a plus next to that, that means we improved on where we were. If you see it, you know, just an equal sign, and, you know, that's obviously staying the same. And if it's a minus, then we've decreased some, but you see more pluses and minuses. So we're really pleased to expand on where we were a year ago. And so we'll now wait to hear for some more on the accountability. As the board knows, we had five schools in the distinction last year. And so lots of firsts and lots of great results to share with you tonight. First slide that I have is our participation rate slide. So what's truly great about this is you'll see the progression from 2019 to current date, where we have seen your students participate, and you're seeing numbers of 100% there. And so that reflects the work that our administration has done with our families. And so it's not uncommon for, you know, our principals or assistant principals to contact the families and see and try and arrange for, like, tasks, because we want to make sure all our students are having the benefit of the assessment. We can use that for planning. So I can't thank them enough for their work and then also the messaging that comes out of Gail's office and also the principal's offices in terms of the importance of this. One of the things that we've seen that we have reported on in the past, but I think that you've seen that enough, was the time on tests. So the time on tests continually increased over the years. And so we're thrilled that our families, our students, have taken this so serious. And that, I will say too, is as strong as the numbers that you will see. We always look at the numbers and students behind those. So when there are students that are not achieving those results, we have a plan for those students. So we have plans and supports placed for those students that are not reaching those numbers. And then even our students that are achieving the highest levels need supports at different times, you know, throughout their career, through their years. So I think that that's an important piece of this, is that we do not lose sight of that as we go forward. So I am very excited to turn this over to Mr. Salatary in the Daniel Hand administration.
Thanks, Dr. Cook, and thanks, everyone, for having us. Before we get started, I just want to thank the leadership team at the high school as well, and all the teachers. Just incredible work that's consistently focused on what's best for our students. Our students need a compliment as well. You know, they're so committed and dedicated and work so hard. It's really incredible. We're happy to share our results. I'm going to talk about a few different things about AP performance as well as NGSS performance. Brian and Melanie will talk about SAT performance, really positive across the board. If you look, this is a slide that has a lot of information going on. And if you look at that top line that's running horizontally, that's the combined enrollment of juniors and seniors from 2018 to 2024. And you can see a pretty steady decline. Back in 2018, we had 561 upperclassmen. Last year, we had 399. That number continually goes down. But when you look at the charts, you can see the number of AP exams that have been taken over the years is represented in green, and that number keeps going up even though the number of our students' total enrollment in grades 11 and 12 is going down. You can see out of the 365 exams taken in 2024, that orange line, 316 of those had a score of a three or higher, which is, again, really incredible. And if you compare it over the years, you know, especially based on enrollment, these are just really good numbers. And one of our focal points was having students more involved in the AP test and obviously to perform really well. Number of students tested, I think that's a pretty impressive number in blue. Again, if you look back in 2018, 561 kids, 187 took a test. Last year, 399, 183 participated, which really very, very positive news. And out of that 183, 153 had a score of a three or more. So really very, very positive. You know, we have been offering the extra help sessions, which I think are having an impact. We're planning on doing so again. We did some informal surveys with our students. They found it to be very helpful. And those sessions allowed teachers to work more on curriculum and instruction during classroom time and work on test-taking strategies in those after-school or even weekend or Zoom sessions. So we're looking for some more participation in that. And when you look at our action plan, to be honest, we're just going to continue doing what we're doing because we're seeing really positive results. We're really happy with that. And again, to see that steep decline in enrollment and those numbers going up is nothing but really, really positive. We're proud of that performance. This slide shows, you know, just a breakdown. I would ask you to look at the bottom of the slide, the 2023, right in the middle, exam results. You can see the breakdown of 84% of students scored at a three or above, which, again, really positive. Last year, 86%, but if you see a significant move in the number of students who scored a three compared to now the number of students who scored a four, really, really positive. And you see that one and that two, those numbers are going down. So these are all really great trends that we hope to continue. And I do think our teachers spend a lot of time and are really committed to, you know, giving our students great experiences. And those after-school type sessions are seeming to get more and more popular. We'll start that again in trimester two, and we're hoping that more students participate in comparison to last year. And so great trends with our AP scores, really happy about those. And, you know, moving on, we're going to switch gears to Mr. Bodnar, who's going to talk about some SAT performance.
Thank you. So similar to our AP scores, our SAT scores continue to move in the right direction. You can see our ELA scores here are fourth in the DIRH. A year ago, they were fifth, so we dove a spot further. We also improved by seven points in this area. The next slide, just a little greater detail, shows you that. It shows you the trend over time. You can see, again, a seven-point increase from a year ago. You see the DIRH also went up seven points, but we remain 12 points above the DIRH average. And as you can see, even increased our scores in comparison to the state. And again, this is a trend that has, you know, since we've come out of the pandemic, after that first year, we have that extremely high year. We've continued to be, you know, building back up and everything at the moment. As TJ said, heading in the right direction. And we get to a further slide to see our plan as we continue to move forward.
Similar to what Brian said, and TJ already said about the AP scores and the reading scores, our math scores have increased. As you can see, we are number one in our DIRH, so we're just going to, like, leave that there for a moment. And so we're very excited about that. When I go to the next slide, you can again just see the trend that have happened. You will notice significantly that the C average continues to decline, as well as the DIRH. The DIRH went down pretty significantly last year. 10 points where ours was unmatched in terms of only going down four. So very, very proud of our overall SAT scores.
Our next slide, you can, I think, follow yourselves and see the upward trend. What we wanted to kind of point out as well, typically when people talk about their high school experience, they sort of throw out, "What's your SAT?" What's pretty amazing is that the average SAT at Daniel Hand this past year was an 1139 SAT, which is quite remarkable.
And these are scores. We'll just show you where we compare, not just in DIRH B, but also just in general across the C. So we are number 10 in the C for our English Language Arts score and number 6 in the C for our math score.
This slide is just, again, showing the past two years and the plan of action that our English and math departments took in trying to work with students to, again, improve scores. And the one thing, just to kind of point out on this, though, when you take a look at the ELA scores, that with the change of the SAT, you're not looking at the exact same, you can see with even the titles in comparison. I mean, the area that's still, though, conventions of English, standard English conventions, is the area of greatest need and the area that our, you know, English department is going to really be focusing with students.
And then similar to the AP prep, the plan of action is to really continue and just enhance what we're currently doing. Our math teachers are very proud, and they're just going to continue to do that for good work.
All right, the last assessment we'll talk about, the high school level, is the NGSS to science assessment that all of our students in grade 11 take. You can see in this slide where we compare it to other schools in our DIRH, and we keep moving to the left, which is really positive direction. And very pleased with those results and commend the Science Department for their work. This is a pretty interesting slide. If you look at the top left under the findings, there's three specific bands in the NGSS. You can see them listed, Earth, Space Science, Life, and Physical Science. The numbers in parentheses to the right are the last three years. So as an example, in Earth, Space, and Science, in 2022, 80% of our students were proficient or higher. 2023, 84. And 2024, 93. You know, if you look at all three of those bands, you can see pretty drastic improvement that is nothing but positive. Time on test was a concern several years ago. Our students were rushing through it. We changed our approach to the actual format of the assessment, not the assessment itself. And we've seen a very significant increase in the average amount of time students spend on that particular assessment. The number of students at the bottom left-hand corner who scored at the one, which is the lowest level in three years, you can see in 2022 is 21% of our students and last year, 4%, significant improvement, to say the least. Our plan, similar to the other areas of assessment we talked about, is to continue what we've been doing because we're seeing really positive growth. And science has done a lot of work with the approach, especially on the test day itself. If you ever have 17-plus minutes of your time, you can click on that little video link and see what the students actually worked on with the science teachers to have them really buy into that assessment, which, you know, compared to the other assessments, the NGSS to students isn't necessarily as important. And I really like to commend the students, and we're talking with our Science Department in some ways just to recognize and celebrate that really positive performance. Pretty simple slide over the past few years, from 2019 to currently. We've seen outside of that one year in 2021, a really steady incline, and we anticipate to see that number keep going up as the years go on based on our approach in preparing our students to be successful on this particular assessment.
We're going to pause and see if you have any questions for the high school presentation.
I'll just quick comment. I mean, it was absolutely incredible, and I thought it was awesome last year, and it's even more awesome this year. The participation rates, just seeing those numbers go up at 100% across a lot of those grades is incredible. I'm just curious, anecdotally, like, if anything surprised you. And like, if you were expecting to see these increases, were there areas that were more of an improvement than you thought? Like, what were your, those sort of personal takeaways? I'm curious.
I would say the NGSS performance, you know, seeing such a steep incline, and again, getting juniors who are taking a lot of assessments that are, you know, pretty taxing on them. You know, to see the approach the Science Department took, and they really looked at it by course, not just a general approach, because we've been looking at data to see students in, you know, one of the lower-level courses might need a little more focus on the preparation to be successful on this assessment compared to the physics kids who always have scored really high. So I give the Science Department a lot of credit, but you cross your fingers on this one because, you know, getting the students to buy in, you know, we changed the entire test setting. You know, Dr. Cook has supported us having a delayed opening for the rest of the school and bringing the juniors in alone to really let them feel like this is important. But this is the one that has been the most pleasant surprise. The other ones, you know, based on all the work we're doing, you know, I don't want to say it wasn't surprising, because I said to Dr. Cook, at some point, you can't go up anymore. And that will happen at times, but, you know, I think the NGSS was the most surprising. But we were really excited when we shared this with faculty and with coordinators, really just great energy throughout the building because we do want our scores on the standardized assessments to be a reflection of the quality of the school, and I think they are.
I do think that getting the juniors to be the
Getting the juniors to be invested in that test is a. Huge challenge because they have so many other tests that they're concerned about and I know. That I, I don't remember when the NGSS is given, but I know that at the time. From my daughter, she's like, they just, they're so done, you know, and they just don't want to care about another task. And it's just. You know, not to like bribe them, but like if there's some way to make them more invested in like. Like you want to beat the class before you and you'll have like a donut day or, you know. You know, I mean, it's something as simple as that because they're. You know, I think they want to get excited about things, but they're just so drained at that point and. And, you know, donuts have always worked as bribery in my house, you know. Just, you know, throwing it out there for some incentive, you know, personal incentive to beat the class before you or something, you know. Just a thought.
So one of the, if you didn't get a chance to see the seventeen minute video, but one of the things that Paul Masick did is he took that approach exactly.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so he created the video. I really encourage you just to click on the link and at least watch the first few minutes. Before he gets into the true like get ready for the test part, um, but he took a sports like hit at it. And said basically like we are a town that likes competition and we compete. Um, on the field and we like to beat other towns around us and, um, so let's start competing in the classroom and that was like his mantra. Um, he kind of strategically showed where maybe some neighboring towns fell with their scores. And said, let's step it up Madison and let's be number one, like that was his approach. So he did take what you're saying. And weave it into that video rather strategically. Um, and I think for some of our kids, it did matter when they saw that, like wait, we're, we could do better than that. Um, so we did try to, to take that rep this year. We also paired it literally on the same day with SAT.
Yeah.
So it wasn't the last test that they were taking after APs, after SAT, then the NGSS, it was literally paired. So the first half of the alphabet was taking one test while the second half of the alphabet was taking the other, and then the next week they switched. So it kind of felt similar in like the state of it because they were doing it on the same day that their peers were taking the SAT.
Good night. Thank you guys for coming up with that. Thought because there, and there was a little risk of that because. They're taking it earlier in the range than they necessarily had to. So we had that discussion and said, well, we're giving up a few, um. Weeks of, of instruction, but we think that students take it as serious and we think we'll be ready for it. So, um, I credit the high school with that concept of.
I think it did make it feel, you know, like it's more important and, and, you know, maybe not equally to the SAT. But, you know, because you gave it that half and half and the days and the other students weren't there and it was a focus on the test. So I think that was a really brilliant.
The results. Really impressive and they're commendable. You know, and they say a lot, first of all. You know, the consistent trajectory. Can only be explained by deliberateness and working and pursuing the plan. Because you can't look at that and go, well, it was this cohort of kids or whatever it moved. The other thing that I really applaud is. The thought and the deliberateness. In terms of. Analysis and diagnosing, where do we need to put our efforts? What is this really about? You know, and something like student mindset, because it's easy to go, what's going on in our courses? What are we doing with the instruction? But to do that analysis and say, we think the key piece here is one, they have to have a comfort level and knowing how to take the test and two. We need to up. The excitement and the investment. You know, I mean, that's good analysis and, you know, and then implementing a plan could ultimately give, you know, gets these results. So. You know, I listen to these things and on the back of it, I go. This is what happens when you empower teams. To really look at the data, really look at work and work together. To try and improve things, which, you know, we see across the board in many parts of this district, but. You know. I mean, you're to be applauded and, you know. This is outstanding work.
I think Seth lost the way with more plaudits.
Well, definitely plaudits are in order, but, um, I just wanted to, for context, go back a little bit with some historic. Uh, historical perspective. This board, um, has long recognized and certainly under our. Prior, um, superintendent Tom Skiris. We were kind of drilled on the concept, uh, that, you know, standardized testing. Is not and should not be deemed the be all and end all. Um, and I think the current administration under Dr. Cook, um, they very much agree. Um, and, and I think the board still understands that, however. Um, we are faced with the practical consideration that. That's how the rest of the world is looking at. How Madison is doing in comparison to other districts. And we, we've made a conscious shift. And the board, I'm very proud that the board has made this shift and created the. The space and the priority, um, and to allow the administration to run in this direction and it's amazing to me. That without teaching to the test, again, and that was another one of the board's concerns. We don't want to teach to the test. Any, any district can feed answers to kids and they do better, you know, on, on the tests. But we. You know, we want to produce well-rounded. Um, well-educated, interested and motivated students. And, oh, and by the way, if they're also motivated to do better on these exams. Um, including, including the NGSS. Then that much the better. So thank you all for the amazing work you've done. It's very clear. Uh, that you took that charge and ran with it beautifully.
Yeah. Thanks for the honor. Appreciate the support. Next level. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, uh, we're gonna continue to let the good times roll with the smarter balanced assessments, uh. So smarter balanced assessment is given annually, uh, to students in grades three, four, five, six, seven and eight. But the results that we share, also the collective efforts of not only. All the professionals that work in those grade levels, but also all of the grades before. Grade three, so pre K, K one, two, uh, we all own the success, um, of our results. It wouldn't happen without everybody, uh, being able to teach all of those standards and really go deeply into our assessment results. On an everyday basis in order to see the success that we're seeing. This team thing. So I do want to thank all of those professionals, um, district one, but it's really incredible. To see an entire district profile, um, at this level of achievement. Um, it's very unusual. So as Dr. Cook said, we, we thought last year was great. You know, we were at the top ten percent of the state and. Academic achievement in all of our buildings and, um, we are continuing just to. Increase our scores across grade levels, both in ELA and mathematics. Um, we are looking at cohorts of students that are being. Successful going all the way up through the grade levels and you could see that even though our level of achievement was quite high last year. Um, we have, uh, plus five percent in many places in our academic growth. Um, between years. So that's just, uh, an incredible performance. When we look at these, uh, we also, uh, looked at our dirt performance. Um, and we're number four. I think it's a new champ. We're number four, both in ELA and math. Um, we are, uh, definitely seeing achievements scores well above our dirt. Uh, many times we are nestled firmly in dirt A. Um, I want to give a shout out to our colleagues in Woodbridge, which we like to change places with. Um, Woodbridge is a small district in comparison to Madison. It's actually about half of the student size that we have represented in grades three through eight. Uh, we have a, a little over a thousand students and Woodbridge is about five hundred students. Um, and I really like to recognize that because when we have our motto of every child, every day. Um, you don't get achievement scores like that when you're not paying attention to every child every day. Because every percentage, uh, represents a very small number of students. Uh, when you look at Buchanan, they are actually double in size. They're, they are over two thousand students, uh. Or over, I'm sorry, eight hundred students. Uh, where, uh, Darian is a thousand students, uh, more than Madison represents in this graph. And, um, Wilton is six hundred students. So you can see that we are playing with, uh, districts that are much larger than us in most of these comparisons as well. So, uh, we're number four, we're number four. And again, this is across the state. Um, so I think Dr. Cook started us out with two hundred and one districts. So. For four out of two hundred and one, both in math and ELA, really consistent results. Uh, so we, we look across the dirt. I mentioned our friends in Woodbridge. You can see a, a fractional difference between the two of us. And ELA when we're looking at combined scores for grades three through eight. At or above goal. And if we break it down by grade level, uh, we're seeing again a very high level of success in the dirt. Um, sharing those first couple of plots, um, across the dirt. And we're seeing a number one in math in the dirt by a slight margin over Woodbridge. Um, and again, you're seeing placed in the dirt. Um, our percentage at or above goal in math, um, is extremely high as well in the dirt. Thank you to Shank for our new pictorial representation of our graphs. I thought that was really cool. And I'd like to turn it over to Paul Smith, a little bit closer looking at their handles. Welcome, Catherine and Martha.
Thank you. So thank you for having us here tonight. We will share with you a summary of language arts first, move into math and then science following that. Um, in English Language Arts, we're just excited to see those numbers, uh, go up small, but, but powerfully. Um, and that has been consistent with all three grade levels. This state of growth really is thanks to the teachers and the coaches, of course, but. We also appreciate the support from parents and, and the buying from students. We've seen. Just the shift. They genuinely want to do well and this is exciting to see a new mindset from students. In the classroom, in the building and in the district and I, I think this kind of proves it there. Um, now our goal, we're very happy with eighty two percent and eighty and seventy eight, but we still have twenty percent of students that we can. Uh, really focus on, how we can move that forward as well. So that's one of the focus areas that we will have. And some of that is shown on this slide. So. You know, it's interesting. The first one, we talk about collaboration between gen ed and special ed and in the old day. General education did this and special education did this and it's not, I, I, that line is so blurred now in, in a good way. Because it's really just about what do our students need? What do all students need? How can every expert in the building? Help all the students in the building. So differentiation. Has been a goal at Paulson for the last two years and will continue to be so. And that's pretty powerful when you look at the entire building. Uh, we also are working on communication with other content areas. This is not just about LA anymore. You know, when we look at the literacy and nonfiction, reading and writing connections, that is across all content areas. So it gives continuous and consistent, uh, strategies and messages for students. That they're hearing the same reading and writing vocabulary, the same literacy expectations and teaching. Not just in your ELA class. So again, there's no lines anymore, which is exciting. Of course, the PLCs and the coaching cycles. They, they're just proving to work and we will always continue to use those and look for new ways to use them even more effectively. We mentioned vocabulary and you would think it's a, just such a, a discreet thing to mention in one of our bullets, but it is so critical. Not just the vocabulary practice among district, uh, among the content areas rather, but even just vocabulary. Morphology, that which is, is just, I love it seeping right out of that ELA classroom into all the other areas. So. Just some of our priorities, we're pretty excited about for ELA. And in terms of math, you can see it numerically, we're holding our own, we're being pretty consistent, uh, over the years and then if you look longitudinally, you have grown. And, uh, we continue to work as a team to analyze the students who are close to, um, being at or above gold. And being able to see what works, what didn't work and being able to provide, um, support to either continue on that path or to continue to grow. Um, but we know that, you know, a percent of two here or there can really be three and four students depending on the cohort and the number of students. But every student matters and as Gail had said, um, every student, every day, that really is what we live and what we practice. So we're continuing to work on, um. Uh, supporting all of our students and the priorities that we're working on this year are directly related to the concepts and procedures. So we continue to use our looking at student work protocols. So they're looking in the DLCs and identifying the math standards that are working. Um, this math sense that we need to address. Targets to help individual students grow and to help develop that level of understanding. This collaboration takes place not only between general ed and special education teachers, as Martha said. But also with administrators, with the math interventionists, with the math coaches. Everybody has an important role. Um, and a place around the table so that everything is done strategically. This thought and, um, uh, purpose behind everything that we teach and everything that is assessed. And then what we do with that data and how do we use it? That leads directly into continuing to review the curriculum. Uh, so that it, we're making sure that it is implemented with fidelity, that's accessible to our students. And when needed, that it's revised and adjusted as needed. The ongoing professional development, um, we have professional development that takes place in many different forms. Some of that is by having presenters admit, sometimes it's by having. Um, educators go to different workshops, um, or present at different workshops and then share the information with colleagues. But really the, the ongoing coaching is really important because. It continues throughout that whole year and it's a person they can go to, um, regardless of the unit, the time or the day. And developing, I think it was TJ who said it earlier, with that perseverance of learning new concepts and being able to. Build that stamina and know when they're taking a test, how to approach it, how to address it, how to work through it. In regards to, um, the NGSS. You could see if we look over the last really four or five years, we're looking, um, at a overall growth. Um, but there continues to be some ups and downs. We're fully aware of that. We are working with staff to celebrate those strengths, but also to, um, drill down and identify the specific areas of growth. We would like to see that, the percent for twenty 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 five to be higher than what it is now. Um, we know that it's a little bit different in science than it is in math and language arts. Because we're comparing from fifth grade to eighth grade to eleventh grade. So not only are the teachers looking at it through that lens of three years of instruction. So is the coordinator, but so are the students. So they're having to retain information that they hold on to for multiple years. Versus math and language arts that is assessed on an annual basis. So we're in the process, even as recent as this afternoon, at one of our department meetings. Um, I've been adjusting the units, having that communication, looking at what standards are addressed, how our curriculum meets those standards. And making, uh, revisions as needed. Um, we're working through that with a, um. Um, a full approach to be able to, to address, um, what we need to and to continue to move forward in the area of science. This is our ranking, um, as you can see, again, we don't want to be on the right side. We prefer to be on the left side. That's, that's our goal and we hope to be sitting in front of you at this point next year. Um, being further, further towards the left and, uh, being able to celebrate that. So the bottom line is that we know this, we want to grow and we have plans in place to continue to move forward. The priorities, um, I have just briefly spoken to, but, uh, reviewing the units to see how they align. And again, that work was started. Uh, earlier, but was, uh, the teachers were rolling up their sleeves and digging into that this afternoon. Taking a look at all of the strands within the NGSS to identify the strengths and weaknesses. And then the teachers are part of developing that action plan alongside with us. Um, so that they, they have the ownership and the plan to do that together. And we're supporting the, uh, to the identification of resources, as Martha said, with language arts. Um, continuing to support that instruction, both in science, but also in social studies. Particularly in the area of nonfiction, reading and writing and exposing students to the different formats that they will need in order to be successful.
Just want to add on to, uh, Catherine's comments about science scores is that this is our regularly scheduled. Year to do an assessment of the science standards and review our science units. So we fully anticipated, um, that this would be a big year for science. And it is. The Curriculum Council heard last presentation that we were conducting our science audit. And along with that, we'll be doing unit adjustments. So it is our regularly scheduled time and it seems like there's good work that we can be doing in our curriculum revision. So we're happy that the timing coincided with that for a look. Questions for Catherine and Martha?
If you're working on the science curriculum this year, when do you think it will go in front of the curriculum committee?
So we started working on it during the summer, so past summer. So it starts really the last day of school. Science teachers are flooding in and doing a lot of work. Primarily, the high school was the dominant group in all summer long. So we think that's going to be our first wave of adoptions. Some of them, it won't be an entire revamping of the science, just as we updated ELA and math. Some of the units will not come before the board for readaption because the outcomes and the standards will still be solid. So it's when we're revamping that tough part that they do come to the board for an entire readaption. So the first half will be in January. And then the last half will be in June. So it will be past the NGSS administration, but it's still will impact positively the NGSS administration.
So we'll probably see high school in January and then the rest of it in June.
Yeah, more high school. I met, I meet with my tapes all the time. So they're feeling a little pressure right now because I'm like, okay, I'd like to see at least half a bit up by January. We have a lot of work to do the second half of the year and lots of disciplines. But primarily, I think it's going to be high school. But not, not the same as every, everything that will be up. Thank you for asking.
I just wanted to, a couple of comments. I recognize and appreciate that there's always room for improvement. And I appreciate the efforts there, but just noticing that while the increases maybe were a few points from twenty-three, twenty-four, they're significant from twenty nineteen, you know, across the board, like ten points or more. So it's also, it's a, it's a process, but that improvement over time is is pretty remarkable. And I'm also just curious, like generally for everyone, how, like, do we share this information with the students? Like, we're number one or we're number four, whatever it is. Because I imagine they'd be really excited and proud to see this information and then how we share it, you know, with the community as well, in addition to, you know, it's a nice presentation. So I don't know who that question is for, but I'm just curious.
It's a good question. I don't think we have shared the results with our students. I can't say their individual results aren't shared.
Right, right.
Many times they are.
Yeah.
And that's where we're trying to promote growth and celebrate growth, that's the individual student. For overall achievement, I think we did a lot of blast once we got our accountability results.
Yeah.
When we have those kinds of celebrations, I think that goes out to the community at large. Dr. Cook always does a great job in sharing that information. And when we get individual recognitions as well for other pieces that we always do press releases on that too. But overall, I think every district does an accountability report to their board of ed and it's always fellow-sized. But via TV, sometimes in the local paper, but not all the time. But it's part of standard protocol, I think, for all communities that are.
Yes, you know, as, as Gail said, obviously all the students get their individual reports. I know some classrooms, I've walked in the classrooms before as they've got the received reports back and teachers have shared, you know, kind of increases in their work. And so I think that's, you know, some of the teacher preferences. I just observed, but.
It's kind of tough because the accountability results come out so much later than our students. Taking the class, they've got a whole new teacher.
Yeah, sometimes a whole new building.
We thought about taking out a billboard, but we weren't sure that would, you know, be well received from that booster club.
Just pretty, it's pretty, especially like you talked about with the juniors in particular, like putting all that work into these tests and getting parent buy-in more and students committing, I think, which is to say like, this is really working. And we appreciate all your hard work, kids and parents and teachers. So.
I feel like eighth graders would also be very susceptible to donuts. But, but I do wonder, like, you know, looking at this, the science test for eighth grade. You know, are we thinking that this is, I mean, we don't teach to the test. So is this, you know, it's a big change, I think, in maturity when you go from fifth grade to eighth grade and then again to the high school. And I know there's a big shift from Paulson to the high school in how you study and how you, you know, really gain that sort of long-term memory. And it's not growth memorization, it's about, you know, really understanding the material and retaining it. So in this particular eighth grade science test, I guess I'm wondering, do we think this is like not retaining information because of this large growth period that happens, you know, from fifth to eighth grade or sixth to eighth grade? Or is this, you know, because the science classes vary from grade to grade so much? You know, it's not like when you're at the high school, you know, you take physics, you take, you know, it's very set and very specific. And I feel like, you know, in six to eight, it's a lot more broad coverage. And so, you know, what is your thinking about, in my opinion, these are not great scores? And it's not, and that's just what I think, you know, I'd like to see hundreds. But so what are you thinking, like, need, what work needs to be done? What are you planning to change?
So before they answer that, because I think, you know, there's a, there was a lot to the question, but I think there's a lot of good pieces in that. Because I, I, I think you shared a lot of things that are, are accurate in terms of that, it's always. And that's, I think, the, the problem with scores and educational assessment data, that it's, it's never one thing. You know, there's never one, one piece, but let, let us share what we did at Central Office to impact the scores probably in a negative way. So we took the science coordinator off of, at, off of the middle school to write wellness curriculum for us. So the board knew that Sarah Sandor for the last two years had written the wellness curriculum for us as a, as a district. And so she was out of that position. So I think that's a, that's a piece that although, you know, may be negative, I think it also speaks to leadership matters, right? So I think that that coordinator model, having that impact. You know, that that was a, that was a piece. I think the other thing I would say that my clear direction to the middle school was to get off the focus, you know, for that time. And so, you know, that their focus was clearly on ELA and math and growth scores. And so that was the, the piece that, that I will say, I mean, when I met with Catherine and Martha, we talked very little about science. We talked about that, that, that focus piece. So I think that when you look at two thousand nineteen to now, that, that growth of thirteen percent, that's solid, you know. But I do think that, that eighth graders sitting down for the, the, the science test, they're hit, eighth graders are hit with a lot of different things as well. And then they're seeing a test that's much more difficult that they didn't take last year, you know, it's not that, that growth. But I'm sure you have things to add to that. But I, I do think that that is a, is a positive commentary on leadership, you know. And, you know, not only the people in this room, but also that, that coordinator level and their work with teachers directly.
I don't expect you have like a, this is our solution, you know, but I just kind of want to know what you're thinking.
Well, kind of take that tangent, I just want to pick up on what you said about buying or what anybody mentioned about buying and the teamwork approach. Those are really great trends, you know, improvement. And I think the challenge in science is that stuff that the kids love is the, are the hands-on labs. And, and that gets them excited. And if there's any way to like tie in or link to the tests, you know, that would be great, but it's.
Field trips.
Our field trip. But that's, it's a great science curriculum and they do get excited about it. And I have no doubt that, that all the methods you employ to raise English and math scores will transfer over to science.
I think so too. And I appreciate you saying that you don't need all of our plans and our answers tonight. It's certainly not something that we come here sitting, sitting before you tonight without having thought about in great detail. And I think to Dr. Cook's point, our emphasis was on ELA and math, and it should have been. And we have no regrets on that. That's where we really did focus our efforts and our resources at that time. And ultimately, the, the efforts in both of those content areas, we believe will transfer more to science. Because you can't do science without being able to do math or without being able to, to read and write, have that understanding of literacy. So I would say, Diane, you had mentioned about growth, we don't teach anything growth. It's very much conceptual, it's about understanding, it's about applying, it's about the inquiry method. And I know I can speak for my elementary colleagues, that's the way it is from the elementary level as well, and certainly is at Paulson. We do have a new science coordinator in the role and she is already working with the departments, looking at this. Again, as I said before, celebrating the successes, but there's always room for growth. We look at our trajectory, for example, compared to what the high school just presented. Everything was very comparable up until this year. And we were focusing on, on moving off the, the list that we didn't want to be on. Our curriculum is up for revision. That's an important process because the curriculum is the written document, but it's also, does not stand alone. The curriculum is, is, is completely applied into the classroom. So if there's revisions that need to be made, that's automatically going to transfer through the teachers and to the students. We also have talked about the timing without, within the testing window. You've heard the creative solution that the high school had tried with their SAT and their science. Our, our NGSS testing is last in the window. Do we have some fatigue by eighth grade? We sure do. We know that. So our leadership team already has that as part of a discussion to say, how do we address it? Is it right to put it first? That's a tricky question. Or is there something that we need to do a little bit differently? And we're in the process of working on that. So, you know, we have the interventionists who can help us and do small groups and support with language arts and math. We don't have that component in science. So we're creating those small groups instruction within the classroom, within the, the big scheme of the curriculum. So these are all of the discussions that are taking place right now. At Paulson, it will continue to take place all year and, and into next summer when the curriculum is approved. And then into the fall again. So it's a process. I think, Emily, you said that it's, it's not a one and done, done. It's definitely not only throughout the course of one year, but multiple years.
And not to beat it to death, but I do want to add on that, you know, we do have coaches in ELA and math. That makes a huge difference. I think you hear that all the time. So that idea of instructional improvement is, is something that I always think about, like, how, how can we stretch that model? What can we, what can we do differently to empower some of those other content areas? The other thing we also learned is the importance of test familiarity during those smaller snippets of practice. The next generation science test does not have as many opportunities as the math and the ELA. And they don't match as nicely with what we're doing in the curriculum naturally. Which has always been our take, is that we want it to be a practice piece, but also be formative in nature and instructional, so we can help the kids to understand how that mechanism works. It is not the same as the other tests in math and ELA. It's unique, it's onto itself, but it's a, it's a whole different engine. So we have found there is another software product that does do some more of what we're looking for. So we're looking at that product as well. We started playing around with it a little bit in eighth grade. But as we said before, you have to build over a period of years. So that's part of that science adjustment. And again, you may not see that as a unit adoption, but it very well might be in our learning pathway in the other grades. So that's another piece. But I, I do want to commend the new coordinator and I just want to commend Michelle Horn, who's doing our curriculum revamping this year. They have met, I think, I don't know, probably ten, fifteen times already, just in the past couple of weeks. And actually Catherine and I were collaborating because we both supervise one of them. And we were talking about their, their goal setting and just how rich they are. So they are really all in and I can't ask for anything with them. And the teachers are too. They've done a great job too.
I kind of wonder if NGSS is like a more of an arcade test. You know, like the, it seems like the, the ELA and the math, I think that, that this state like sort of revamps it and it kind of.
Well, actually, it's got some video component in it and it's got some more current cases. But each one of these is, is a learned test. It's not natural or intuitive at all. You really have to understand how the questions are being asked and how you answer them, as well as how you can use the tools. So that, that's the part I really dislike about standardized testing is that it's not as authentic as I think it should be in order for us to do less with it and have kids just perform. That's why, sorry, I had to say something. But that is my frustration with them, is that.
Well, again, one of the main reasons that their presentations to the board on academic performance, you know, it's not just for us to be able to celebrate the successes, which is always great. But, you know, it's presentation to the board so that the board can look at things and go, there's some areas that, that clearly need more work, you know. And, you know, I think, I think you get, and what the board is really saying is, you know, this is an area that needs more work and we look forward to hear how that unfolds. We had the same message some years back when it was focus groups and we said, this needs attention. You know, and clearly the science piece needs attention. And, you know, I've been involved in conversations around the curriculum, but I have a high degree of confidence that when the board identifies something and the superintendent, the assistant superintendent recognizes that there's an area in need of work, it would, the work will be focused on that. So, you know, this is clearly on our radar and we look forward to see how it evolves.
We have high expectations because you went from being a focus.
You can't wait.
So, you know, the bar's high, we know.
We're so grateful and so responsible. All the principals know, kids, we've everyone, they're very responsive. It's hard to implement that system wide so quickly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Your bite up. The element, paper five.
High expectations and pressure.
Oh, I think they go hand in hand. That's right.
Uh, so, again, thanks for having us. We've done, you know, we'll focus on Brown and then we'll do grade three. But again, I mean, you're going to see some strong numbers and some good action plans and some work to do in, in some areas. But, you know, I think Gail said earlier, this goes pretty taken. One, two, three, this is just a team, just when you see the scores, it's great to see the scores at the high school and middle school and, and everyone plays a role, all the, all the kids. I, I was so happy for our kids. They did such a great job, our teachers. And I think Martha brought up the point about families too, because, you know, you look at our participation rate and they're, they're off the charts. And that goes directly to the, I think, to the, not just the kids, but the families and the importance of getting kids to school, not just during testing for the whole year, you know, that ties into our attendance rates, et cetera. So our slides are kind of simple because they're good, so we'll make them simple. But, you know, as you see in our ELA percentage of students that are vocal, you know, that incremental increase, how much higher it can go, I, I don't know. But our grade four students were first in the dirt and our grade five students were third in the dirt. And again, that steady progress, you know, for, especially in grade four. And again, it's a credit to our grade three colleagues and the work that they did as we received those students. But what's also not on these slides, and again, I don't have all the data in front of you is, as those numbers increase, there's a decrease in the number of students who are the level one. You know, so those kids who are moving forward and hopefully, you know, by the time they get through Brown to Paulson, they're moving into that T two, three with some supports, with some different interventions, et cetera. And then our math scores, again, eighty-four percent in grade four, which is first in the dirt, and seventy-eight percent in grade five, which is second in dirt. So really proud of the work of our. So really proud of the work of our teachers and our kids. Uh, you know, we can't, you know, just you present that and you're like, okay, uh, any questions? You know, like, I don't have any answers, but they're just, the credit goes to the kids and the teachers. Uh, because they've all worked really well. And I think at Brown, we've been fortunate. We've been, we've had very little, if any, teacher turnover. Our teams have stayed the same. So they're working together. They're working with coordinators, you know, we've been working like great team with our coaches. And again, I'll talk about that in a minute. We have a coaching shift this year, but you know, with Michelle and Stacy and Carol Sullivan and Pam, working with the same group of teachers, you know, that consistency, we don't have a lot of teacher turnover. And I think that, you know, plays a role in it. And as people prepare and as people work together a- as a team, and when you had success, we go back to twenty-two, you start having that success again and that recommitment that we made across the district a- and you see the results. They better get to eighty-six. You know, could put a lot of pressure on us. Only kidding. So our ELA priorities, and again, I didn't teach, we're not gonna change much. We're staying the course. So what we're doing is working. You know, worked with the coordinators and the coaches on some different priorities. Again, with just the coaching cycles, we have some new players in our coaching world with Michelle taking her role. Uh, you know, we have a new hire. We're gonna bring her on board. Uh, we have a couple of different grade level changes. So that that coaching cycle won't change, but the people will. And I, and this is very similar to Pulsar, that same coordinators help us with these. Um, you know, again, looking for a cohesive K five school. And I think Martha talked about expanding vocabulary. That's the same thing. We work, as you know, with the same coordinators, uh, five eight, uh, four eight, rather. So they're working with our teachers two days a week. They're working with the Pulsar teachers. A lot of this i- i- it, you know, is the same. And the same with math. Uh, Stacy Daley plays a tremendous role in this. You know, building thinking classroom, you know, the vertical boards. You go to a classroom today and and I'm watching Nick Berulo teach and he's got his certain groups who are just taken to the next level. And he's grabbing smaller groups, doing some reteaching, uh, at a different vertical board. And it's all in alignment with the priorities that, you know, starting a couple of years ago, we're just getting better and better. And then science, again, we percentage wise, we stay, you know, dropped a point, stayed about the same. You know, again, I think uh, when you were talking and having been at Pulsar for all those years and and you know, Brown, we have put science is the back of our testing window. And again, that's unexcused, but it's just, it's the reality. It's it's a bit of a grind during the the testing window. Um, you know, I think for the last three years, and our teachers take such pride in John Placino, Frank, that test is hard. He was asking you the question, that test is hard. Because, you know, they do tremendous job preparing the kids, but how will you adjust that? I don't know. But again, we take it in fifth grade and we take it in eighth grade. So it's a it's a long time in between. And we don't have the same structure as Gail pointed pointed out, um, you know, in terms of code names, et cetera, in the science area. But again, overall, our seventy-five point one in fifth grade, you know, we've got the left side, right side. Um, again, proud of the work, uh, just about the same as last year. And so again, puts us in that one, two, three, four, whatever number, uh, trouble with us a lot of science, clearly. Uh, but again, we can look at where we test in the window, how we prepare, and we'll continue to do that as we have for the last few years. And again, work with Diana Floyd, who's our new coordinator, you know, uh, back to the curriculum writing, to audit each unit, determine the alignment, identify deficits, and I think that's the important work and then rewrite, uh, to support alignment with NGSS. So in a nutshell, that's the Brown world. Um, again, we'll go one more year in this model. And so next year, we'll be presenting based on what we did this year, and then after that, it'll be a little bit different. Questions?
Good work. Thank you. Yeah, I just said, good work. Thank you. The whole district, up and down. Great work.
Well, last but not least, we're excited to present to you, um, how our teen tiny little third graders did and um, Y'all hit on this, but it is just a miracle that our amazing third grade teachers, our third grade coaches get these children to even sit down, focus and finish the test, let alone get the scores that we do. Um, so Diane, I'll take that door it wrong with you. Because they really did nail it. Again, it doesn't show enough. That's right. Um, because it really is, it's amazing. There's so much to teach them beyond some really challenging content. Um, what are the tools? How do I, what does it mean to flag a question and go back? Sometimes my screen is split like this. Sometimes my screen is split like this. This is when I have to listen to a video. How I, how do I go back and replay that video? I missed that. Um, these same little eight-year-olds then, you know, an hour later are going out to recess and building with Lego blocks and doing cartwheels. Like, it's just a lot to ask of them. So we're really, um, we're really proud that as a as a third grade cohort overall, we hit that eighty percent mark, uh, for ELA. And when you break it down, again, we're just seeing that steady growth over time for, um, Jeffrey going from seventy-eight percent to eighty-five. You know, Ryerson two has had really strong performance hovering in that seventy and eighty percent range. So it's just a celebration of, um, again, a really challenging test, really strong instruction. Um, and getting scores that we are are really proud of for ELA.
Yes, and I concur with what Becky has talked about in terms of, these are eight-year-olds who are doing, uh, these assessments and they continue to show steady growth and steady progress. But I would just for a moment, back it up just a bit. It is, I think, I believe, the work that we are doing along along the lines of growth mindset and productive struggle. And these children are going into these test settings with such perseverance and belief in themselves. And I really do believe that that is a result of our teachers and the work that the classroom teachers do. K three in tandem with our coaches and our interventionists. It's that culture that we've created that they can do hard things or they might not know it yet, but they will. And so we're asking them to go into this test setting that for us feels very high-stake, right? Um, and they're just doing the best that they know because they know that they believe in themselves. And they know that their teacher believes in them. And so I think it's that work that really does produce the results that that we're looking at. We can talk tonight about all the structures and the strategies and structurally that we have in place. But I would be remiss if I did not talk about that I believe that that is at the heart of it. Um, parent feedback, anecdotal information for families is my child is not just saying this today, that I can't do this yet, but I will. Or I can do hard things, not just in academics, but on the soccer field and in the dance recital and at my clarinet recital. That speaks volumes to, we are really building positive and productive citizens. And I just think that that's really a celebration of our teachers. So I just would be remiss if I didn't say that. That's just powerful in the data. Um, thank you. Oh, yeah. Yes, next slide. So again, obviously showing steady growth, steady progress, uh, fluctuation in data uh, year to year, but um, that's cohort dependent. Um, but overall, if we look at what we're asked, what we're showing results of is it's at or above goal. Those are really high percentages overall. Um, in in the schools, both schools share that celebration.
But you can actually even see within the cohort that they're increasing from year to year, not excepting twenty nineteen, because there's no twenty twenty data. What I can see going, you know, um, oh, sorry, it's by school. The other, the other data was, you could look at the cohort by year and see that really.
Absolutely, Diane.
And much like the other schools, our priorities really haven't changed much from last year. A lot of what's up here now are from slides from, um, from last school year. And because we know what is working, we know what our kids need. Obviously, we adjust by cohort, little by little each year. Um, but we know it's the instructional tasks and activities that we put in front of kids that have to be of high quality. Um, we know that it's the teacher's professional development that in ELA, we continue, even though we have these great scores. Email's going today with Gail about setting up professional development for reading comprehension and fluency. Um, it's our strong PLC meetings, working with our team leaders and how to ru- run a PLC that really is efficient in looking at student work and making instructional decisions based off that. And again, our phenomenal coaching team that already has coaching cycles going. We're only in week four of school and um, you know, they're they're deep in it with teachers, really, uh, looking at instruction and and trying to better their practice in all of the ELA areas.
And then same same lines in math, we're continuing to do the work that we have, we have been doing um, along looking at increasing, uh, student understanding and proficiency as it relates to communicating reasoning. One of the ways that we're doing that, uh, K three, not just focused on our third graders, but so that it is just uh, weave throughout their experience is, um, exposing them to the language and vocabulary and the questioning format. Uh, through one of our strategies that we use is vertical boards. So they're going through problem solving with their peers attacking a word problem and coming up with various ways to solve a problem. And then being able to take a a gallery walk and seeing how others, uh, solve a problem. And even as small as our first graders into our second graders and third graders, they're they're being, uh, exposed to this and experiencing that and learning different ways to solve a problem and being able to articulate their rationale as to why. And so we feel that that will really, uh, dovetail nicely into being able to be competent in attacking those, uh, types of problems and questions in that test setting. Um, I think the PLCs that we have opportunities to bring the results of our IAVs and looking at student work and really digging into an analysis of what our students are doing well at and capitalizing on that. And then looking at areas of improvement and looking at ways that we can set up our classrooms into small groups and utilizing not only the coaches, the interventionists, but also the paraprofessionals that we have in the classrooms to, um, help students progress to have a stronger performance and understanding in those areas identified. Um, and then looking at the coaching cycles, I know a lot of our teachers are tapping into our math coaches and taking the idea of how to write a written response, um, in ELA and carrying that over to how to write a written response for math. Um, obviously with identifying an equation first and then going from there. But just being able to, um, really scaffold that, support that for our students so that they understand that and internalize that for themselves. And that happens with all of those critical people to make that happen.
We talk a lot about vertical work, um, and heard a lot about, uh, some of the common terms come up again and again. Vertical Ford's been one of them, knows about, um, technique. Um, last year, all of the coordinators and instructional coaches, uh, both in the ELA and mathematics did vertical rounds. So the high school people went down to the elementary levels and saw that instruction. ELA instruction, we went to middle, we went to high school. Um, and of course, we meet in this room every single month. That's a vertical team. We've been doing that for several years, but it's, um, the strength of the vertical alignment, you see when you're looking at number four in the state in math, number four in the state in ELA, number four in the state in SAT, um, it's really, really consistent. Um, so we're uh, really trying to keep that momentum going, even though sometimes people shift and uh, faces shift, but, uh, the techniques are still there and the conversations are ongoing. So uh, we continue to meet vertically, we continue to deepen the work, um, back growing. Questions, comments?
I'm just gonna say that, um, I really appreciate the description of the test. Because you you look at the numbers and you're thinking about this, you know, test on a computer, but when you put it in the context of you know, an eight-year-old child trying to navigate through this pretty complex, I mean, that that is very eye-opening, you know, and it makes you look at the scores a little differently because when you think about the growth of a child um, going, you know, from elementary school up through the middle schools to high school, the amount of growth there, not just physically, but mentally is extraordinary. And to take these very standardized tests and and trying to pinpoint, you know, where they're at, it's just, it seems, you know, not so important. And then I I really appreciate what you said, um, Mrs. Spooner, about, um, about these kids and how they're taking this, the struggle, you know, to to learn and being able to um, to persevere, because that is so important and that is exactly what I want to hear.
And when you, again, every year, we benefit from the great work they're doing, because you see it when we have new kids, maybe to the district. Who didn't have that experience there to go through that process to catch up with, we try to do it, work the fifth, I know they do. Because they haven't had that, uh, experience that lead to the great work that they do. So we benefit from that. You you see it when you have new students.
Yeah, and and I'm not, not as worried about Pulsar because you see this continuum. And we see how good they are when they get to hand. So it's, I think it's just, you know, it's the growth and it's just, it it'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Focusing, uh, building that culture of competence. I don't think that can be overstated, you know, as an educator. I've seen years ago, we used to call up a Jonathan Livingston seagull principle, which is, I fly because I think I can fly. You know, and building that belief in young people and that whole idea of perseverance. And, you know, for them to come home and go, you know, I can do difficult things. You know, you don't get that kind of learning unless you get that level of personal buy-in and confidence and everything. So I'm glad you focused on that because I think it's huge.
I think we all would agree around this table that we're very lucky to work with the teachers that we have in our buildings that just emphasize this with our young learners, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I just, there are, first of all, you know, everyone, congratulations, great job. Um, there are three things I wanted to cover, you know, um, having heard the whole presentation. One theme that we know from the past and that we see again tonight, um, is that time in district um, tends to result in better testing. And that's, that's a tribute to our vertical alignment, to all the work that's done pre-K all the way through twelve. And, um, it's truly amazing. Um, and you know, it's, again, it's a tribute to all the levels and, you know, a great, the high school gets great SAT scores. But it starts all the way down in pre-K. Um, the other thing is, I I was, um, a bit concerned initially about the eighth grade science uh, NGSS score, um, but with, but with perspective, like we're still doing well, we're just not doing Madison well for for, you know, for right now, but I was actually happy to hear that we are just entering the curriculum review cycle for science that will allow us the opportunity to align better with the NGSS. And that one thing we are really, really good at as a district is when we do these curriculum review counts um, reviews and when we develop curriculum, we we address all that stuff. And so I am very confident and I'm excited looking forward uh, to see, um, what comes of that, um, you know, the NGSS, uh, science scoring. Um, especially in eighth grade, but otherwise, you know, it's still, it's still good. It's not great, but I think it will get great. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to mention is just, um, participation. Participation rates for testing and especially, well, participation and excitement or interest rates. You know, our, our students. That are taking the science test more seriously at the high school level, I think is phenomenal. And I, you know, that's a tribute to whatever we're doing. I don't know if it's a, it sounds like we're appealing to the natural competitive nature. That pervades our district and I, that's working and that's great. But, and then for our special needs students, I think getting those participation rates up. You know, with parental buy-in, student buy-in and, you know, those students are, are really doing well. As well. And you know. I just think we're headed in a great direction. We're on a great trajectory and this is all very exciting. And thank you, everyone involved for all your hard work. It's paying off.
Thank you.
Amy, there was so much.
Well, I think we can address first quarter comments throughout, so. Here in some, if you have any additional comments, we can move on.
Just that, you know, eighth grade is a tough grade, socially, emotionally.
Maybe we should switch it to seventh grade instead.
I don't know if that's any better.
I don't know, maybe not.
It's like that whole, you know, area. That is just a.
But it was good perspective you gave, I think, about all of the many factors, that test in particular. So I think it's just, the more we can share this information, I think. With the community, it sounds like it's the better. And not just parents, you know, I know you send emails to parents and. But I mean, every person invested in this community should care about this. It's just, it's superb. It's really.
It's just exciting what we saw last year and then we, we were like, oh gosh, we're, how are we going to do that this year? And then to have the results that we saw this year was, was just fantastic. And you know, I was thinking about the, the comments too about. When NGSS came out and when we wrote curriculum, and I believe that that first iteration, we didn't even lay eyes on the test yet. So now this is a chance for us to, you know, be wiser as we go into it, but. But you know, I think Dr. Cook and I are always pretty pleased when we're seeing our, our scores in the top third. When you see them in the top couple in the state, then it's, it's like, wow, you know, that's just really something.
And now it's a high bar.
Yeah, I know.
It's a high, high bar, especially with districts that are a lot larger than we are. That, that number, just the math, you know, just is really hard to beat in itself. Because it is every student, it really is. But exciting, you know, today we met with all the interventionists and worked on ELA. Work and some of our SRBI work and that was great work too. So we're, we're going to continue to do what we do and. And hopefully meet the needs of every student and everybody. Thank you for your support. Yeah, thank you.
Right. Do we have any audience response to what you presented? Thank you. Would anybody like to propose future agenda items?
Just that we discussed in policy committee today that. About the cell phone policy. So we're going to add that as an agenda item. Therefore, it will be published and the public will know when we're going to discuss it and then they can show up and their comments on it. Because we, the policy was recently updated. But the regulation is, is, was updated. And we discussed it in policy today. So that will be something then that will be accessible to the public to. Familiarize themselves with our policy and regulation.
And address some concerns.
But it won't be for a while because we have.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion to adjourn. All right, Diane, second.
I'll second it.
All right. No discussion, I hope, all in favor? Motion to adjourn at nine oh five. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.